Good morning. It is 10 a.m. on December 13, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government, the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, and universal.
Thank you. So before we adopt today's agenda, I have one change. We're going to remove item number nine from consent agenda. Is that any other changes or I will entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda? I mean, we adopt today's agenda with noted change.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom. I know we do have one person planning to make public comment. And anyone else who is interested in making public comment? If it is in relation to the item about accessory dwellings, ordinance, there will be an opportunity to address the board again at the public hearing. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew there would be more than one opportunity. So with that, we will start with Kim Christensen. Yes. Oh, there's no microphone. Yeah, we do want, we do want you on the microphone.
Okay. Kim Christensen, 2985 South Dakota Avenue, Ames. I want to just make a comment about the accessory dwelling that you're going to be talking about in the consent agenda. I'm, I was hoping maybe we could table that for a while. So the people in the county can maybe have an idea of what's happening, maybe have more input into that particular ordinance before it comes, before the hearing. And I, I, the idea is absolutely fantastic. I think it's good for the county. It's going to be good for the townships. And I think it's going to be really good for the quality of life for the people in, in Story County. So the, the idea is right, right on. But I think that there needs to be some real thought put in, more thought put into the specifics of the ordinance. And instead of going into having the ordinance there and then coming back and giving public input, I was hoping maybe we could maybe either table it for now and have more public input, maybe in the Planning and Zoning Commission area than at the supervisors to give us all more time to think about what might be there. And and I was hoping maybe to get that, maybe come back in the 17th or 24th, but I understand that you can't because it's already published in the paper. So so the only way to do it is to table it, I guess. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Okay, we will close public comment number one and move to agency reports. We have emergency management quarterly report.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to have some of your time this morning to kind of update you on what we have been, what has been going on with emergency management since our last report. We have brought on our deputy coordinator, David Cooper. He started with us October 17th, and I will let him give a brief introduction.
Good morning. As you said, my name is David Cooper. I'm coming to Story County after 18 years with the Nebraska Army National Guard as an active guardsman and retiring after five years of military service. Um, most of that time has been spent working in operations and training, and a lot of that has been with emergency management and serving on a civil support team. And the experience with hurricane response, Hurricane Katrina, Hurricane Ike, and also flood responses in Nebraska.
So we're very happy to have him on board with us now, and he's jumped in with both feet and is taking on a lot of projects already in his time here. So. Um, a considerable amount of our time this last quarter has been spent with planning. I can announce that we have received the federal grant money for the updating of the countywide multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan. So that was an award of $39,950 that we do not have to match. So we do not have to document our local time to, to do a match for this grant in years past. We will be coming up on our five-year. The plan will expire, our five-year plan will expire in May of 2024. We are under contract negotiations with the vendor now, and so we expect hopefully by the February, March timeframe, we will be in full swing with planning meetings. And just as a reminder, the eligibility for the plan is school districts. Every jurisdiction in the county, Iowa State University does participate in the plan as well. And folks will have to attend at least two meetings, have representation at two meetings to be eligible to be part of the plan. The plan does allow for jurisdictions to receive pre and post hazard mitigation disaster funds. So it is a pretty important project to have compliant as we have taken full advantage of disaster mitigation funds in the past. So there'll be more coming on that. The Iowa Department of Education, as you may know, has been conducting school, certain school safety surveys as part of their grant program to increase school security. Those wrapped up here in Story County on last Friday. A bulk of the schools did participate using Homeland Security's contractor Tetra Tech. However, the Story County Sheriff's Office personnel did conduct the school safety assessments for the Gilbert School District. Uh, we did also have school assessments with St. Cecilia's and Ames Christian Schools as well. So they will be able now take advantage of a $50,000 grant per building for security, safety improvements going forward now that they've completed these. This year for our agency planning requirements, the state of Iowa has introduced new, six new recovery support functions that we will be starting to integrate into our planning efforts this year, starting this year with economic. This is something that's a new process to us. But will allow us to bring a lot of partners to the table to help to try to be successful. So there will be a considerable amount of time with that developing a new process. I attended some training and have participated in a project with the National Weather Service out of Des Moines that they're looking to implement nationwide with addressing vulnerabilities within Story County in relation to severe weather events, whether it be summer or winter or flooding. After attending the training, a lot of the focus that I have put on determining these vulnerable areas has to do with our conservation areas where we have large people using the space on a regular basis or a large number of camping. So things such as Hickory Grove, Dakin's Lake, Robeson wildlife, and then also focusing on our manufactured home communities that more often do not have the ability to shelter quickly from severe weather. The National Weather Service will use this data to help determine the frequency of their warning products. If things need to come out early, if there's a large swath of vulnerable population. So it's been a very interesting project and we do appreciate that they are working with emergency managers at the local level to really identify what is truly vulnerable. We can update this information at any time as we maybe identify more vulnerable populations. So it will continue to be a work in progress, but we are anxious to see how this information will be used going into the severe weather season in the spring. We conducted our annual I-35 closure drill. Uh, we know many times winter events do impact our, the traveling public and Iowa DOT generally will close the interstate right at the 111. Uh, so we conducted our annual plan to help refresh our partners on their roles and responsibilities, and then also to ensure that contact information was up to date with that plan. No significant changes this year, but it's always a good reminder for everybody when that happens. Um, I had the opportunity to serve as an exercise evaluator uh, for Clayton Oliver, who's the emergency manager for Iowa State University. He teaches an honors program that teaches students how to be their own first responder. And then they culminate their semester with a full-scale exercise. So they simulated a tornado striking one of the towers at Iowa State University. Great experience, really great to see these kids excited about doing, uh, learning and applying what they've learned. And now hopefully we've created a new group of people that potentially could be first responders in their communities as they leave college. It was a lot of fun. Thoroughly enjoyed that. Supervisor Merkin and I met with representatives from Feenstra's office. Supervisor Merkin was there with her commission chair hat on, but we did have a conversation with Feenstra's office about some of the National Weather Service federal legislation that's coming along that is to increase their capabilities to improve weather forecasting, and especially when it comes to severe weather events. We also talked about the hazard mitigation planning requirements and how it can be a very daunting task. And just had discussion about, kid, is there a way to refocus the emphasis of the hazard mitigation plan? And then we also had a discussion about the delays for the federal government and releasing grant funds to the local level. We're very lucky here. It doesn't impact our budget incredibly. But there are some counties that when those federal grant dollars do not come, it causes significant budgetary issues for them. On November 28th, as, as you're aware, we were recognized by the Ames Rotary as heroes of the community with the Paul Harris Fellow Award. It was a great honor. We did not know that was coming. I greatly appreciated the support from the Board of Supervisors that day. And also your ongoing support of our office. Keith was able to attend virtually from Texas, so I was very happy that he got to, to see what was going on there. But the things that we were recognized for was truly a partnership. We could not have done what we did with COVID and the duratio without our partners, which does include the Board of Supervisors. Um, looking forward, I will be reaching out with our state legislators. Iowa Emergency Management Association has some legislative priorities coming forward this next legislative session. One of them is to partnership with the National Emergency Number Association, or NINA, and the Association for Public Safety Communications Officials, APCO, to put forward a joint effort for, to look at the possibility of protected class, not only for emergency managers, but also for 911 telecommunications. Um, we were also putting forward an emergency preparedness tax holiday. We did get some ground with that last year. We're going to come back and reattack that this year to encourage the public to prepare themselves. Have their kit be ready to go for that 72 hours. And then there also is going to be some continued work on Iowa Code 29C, which addresses uh, the funding of emergency management agencies. Um, I do have additional information that I will be sharing when I get that information from my Emma.
I was going to ask if there was a bill or a mock-up of a bill.
There's not, I don't believe there's a mock-up of the bill at this point. I think we're just, it's a, I'm waiting for an informational sheet, a talking point sheet that, that we will share out when I receive that.
What is the basic focus of the, of that? The clarification? You know, or do you?
I don't know. I need, I need to have that in front of me and, and really have some time to digest it. But as soon as I get that information, I will certainly share that out.
That would be good. Thank you.
Yeah.
You can track it down.
And also looking forward, as I mentioned before, we really expect the hazard mitigation planning to be in full swing as we work through this, this next quarter. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
So much.
Your report.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good to see you both.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have consideration of minutes from December 6, 2022.
I would move approval of the minutes.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And now we have consent agenda. Is anyone pulling anything from consent?
I would ask to pull item seven.
So motion to approve consent agenda, but pulling item seven.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Okay, now we've got a consideration of resolution 23 dash 44 setting. I'm sorry, am I reading the wrong one? Yes, I am. Consideration of letter to Ames Urban Fringe Plan Cooperators on Changes to the Draft Plan.
Do you want to do that before doing the rest of the consent agenda?
That's okay. We just approved the rest of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was thinking about something else. Okay. The letter to Ames. We did have, I have one minor suggestion to make here. On the first page, I would like to add a third bullet, and it's because we did talk about the size of the urban fringe, and I think it's, it's really, um, in the, in the paragraphs that follow, um, there's good explanation of it, but I think it would, um, it would be a little more clear if we added a third bullet on the first page. And I would say that should read, propose additional reductions to the urban reserve to bring the area more in line with the needs of a 10-year plan.
Propose additional reduction.
I'll read it again. Propose additional reductions to the urban reserve to bring the area more in line with the needs of a 10-year plan. And I would also, the third paragraph after the bullets, I would also add a phrase to the last sentence, and I'll just read the sentence as it would read with the phrase added. The changes proposed by the county will remove approximately 3,500 acres from the urban reserve overlay. And then to add, still leaving 13,751 acres in the overlay.
So you're looking at page two?
Mm-hmm. It would be the second, if it's print, if yours printed the second, same way mine did, it would be the second paragraph on page two, the one that starts the urban reserve size in the draft plan with 17,000 acres. So I'm just saying, suggesting that the last sentence, instead of a period after overlay, change it to a comma. And add, still leaving 13,751 acres in the overlay. Then to change is put a little more emphasis on the size of the urban reserve, which is something that we talked about and is incorporated in the letter. But also adding it as a bullet means says, we specifically want you to look at this.
Would you like to come up? Amelia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I just want to make sure the parallelism of those bullet points matches with those changes. Yeah. So the, the removal of the urban reserve overlay from 190th and 180th, and the removal of the area south of Highway 30 west of the Ansley Development. Are you asking Ames to propose additional removals? I just want to make sure we're being really clear. We're not, you don't expect me to come back with additional reductions to that.
No, I expect Ames to propose additional.
Okay. So would you be okay with, um, the city comes back to the other cooperatives with additional proposals for reductions? I just want to make sure we're being really, um, asking them to take action, not just saying we're proposing additional removals, but we're asking them to propose them.
Make additional, would you like that better?
Yeah, and I can kind of wordsmith it. I just want to make sure we're saying, you come back to us with something?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then that second, this second change, did you need that restated?
No, I think that's fine. Do you want this on a future agenda then, next week with that change?
Or you just, can you just do it?
Bring it to Latif.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just do that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question before you go. Um, and if, if we're asking them to propose additional reductions, and then we were saying we're still leaving 13,000 acres in the overlay? Are we saying two different?
No. When we say take out those two areas, I'm, I'm emphasizing that still leaves 13,700, whereas they've only annexed 4,000 acres in 20 years. Um, we're not saying reduce it by X, but I think they should get the idea if they've just reduced, if they've just annexed 4,000 acres in 20 years, why do they need still to have 13,000?
Okay.
We've identified two areas we, we have asked them to take out, but also asking to reduce further. And here's my reasoning. We asked them to change some of the conditional uses. And we took some, we accepted they took some out. I think if you have a smaller urban reserve, I think the remainder of the conditional uses makes sense. However, I think with the, the very large urban reserve they have and saying it's going to be decades before they even consider all that land, I don't think they do, but I don't want to say there's two tiers of conditional uses or something like that, some really closer and some further. That adds just one more complication to what's already a very complicated document. So where I came down with, with the conditional uses was, let's just get the urban reserve smaller. And, and I, and it may not make everybody happy, but to me, it's the way to do it that's simpler and maintains the fact that there, some of those conditional uses to me do make some sense if the urban reserve is smaller.
Would it make sense then to re, to, to say at the end of that sentence then, after still leaving X many acres? Period. The supervisors would like to see that reduced as stated in bullet three or something like that, so that it's not kind of a, just a so ambiguous.
Sure.
Or the, the county would like to see something like that.
The county please further reduce.
Yes, thank you. That, yeah.
Especially given our willingness to limit certain conditional uses.
Yes.
Say that again, Amelia.
Especially to let certain. Things in this area.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So I move that we amend the letter as discussed and, and that the planning and development director send it to the city and Ames and the city of Gilbert.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, moving to public hearing items, we have no public hearing items. Additional items, discussion and consideration of revised holiday policy adding Juneteenth as county observed holiday after seven-day review. Good morning. It's on. Morning. Sorry, these are new. Okay. Um, so the policy to go out for review, um, I did not receive any comments. I don't know if the board did.
I didn't.
Nope. No. So if approved, we will go ahead and update the, um, holiday calendar with all the dates specific on there, put that on the consent agenda um, next week. We get that all done. I did have January 1st as the effective date. That way we have time to get that done and, and everything else. The holiday doesn't fall until June, so we have some time. So January 1st, 2023. Yep, as the effective date.
Yep.
Thank you.
I would move approval of the revised holiday policy adding Juneteenth as a county observed holiday.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you, board. Thank you. Next, we have departmental reports. We have information technology quarterly report. Morning, Barb.
Good morning, board. I get to test out these new microphones. They sound good.
Maybe pull it closer. Do you?
How does that sound?
A little closer.
Closer still?
It sounds louder to you.
I know, I can hear it echoing. I'm like, I'm not going to be screaming at everybody.
Nice.
Thank you for allowing me to do my quarterly report this morning. Just wanted to do some highlights of what the IT department has been up to. Uh, we finally filled our empty position. We went, um, I think seven months. It's really in the last few years, it's been difficult to find qualified people to work in IT and you know, I think COVID threw the whole world in a disaster and and it's been a struggle, but we have, uh, Dean Hazen joined us at the end of September and he's been doing a really good job. Um, we've had, um, some computer installations that needed to be taken care of, and he's been working his way through those. Um, we've also struggled with the, the camera project for this boardroom. Uh, I think we had trouble with Latifa and Linda's microphones. I could hear Lisa perfectly, and you didn't have your, your mouth right up to the, the microphone. So they've done some adjusting with the level of sound that is coming through both of yours, and I think yours was kind of dropping once in a while, too. So it sounds, from what I've heard today and yesterday, it sounds like that's been resolved. Linda, sounds great. Sometimes your voice was low and I don't want you to have to glue your mouth to the microphone, but it does sound good today. So I think we're at a point where hopefully we can sign off on that. And there were a few other tweaks. Um, there were some camera presets we had to do, and we still have one. If we want to add another one, there were three available.
Has someone checked the mic over there? Because that one was also cutting out on Scott on a drainage district meeting.
Which mic?
That.
The, the one. The one by Shelley. No, the, the, the goose neck. I think he was using.
Yeah, he was using the goose neck. Okay. That was, that was the one that I either emailed or called you on. I can't remember. Asked that somebody listen to that meeting. So have they made, um, adjustments since?
Since they have, yes. And then there were also on the, um, the little tablet there, there were some presets on the audio. And there was just a start and a stop, and there was no pause. So they added the pause. I think we're good now. Um, I'll double check the goose neck. I didn't realize Scott was using that one. But yeah, I think then, um, and somebody brought up that the Zoom was in the mirror image, and that was just a setting that Bryce took care of. It was just down in the lower corner. So I think we're good, knock on wood, um, until the next project comes around. Uh, the last couple of weekends, we've been doing firewall replacements. The one in Ames was completed last month. The last couple of weekends, we've been doing firewall replacements. The one in Ames was completed last month. This past weekend, we replaced the one in Nevada. There were some issues vendor related. It wasn't on us. We had a, we were working with a gentleman who wasn't quite familiar with the Palo Alto system. And so I did send a, an email to the vendor expressing some disappointment. Clint was there until five o'clock at night from 10:00 in the morning on Saturday. So they hopped right on it and they worked with Clint all day yesterday and got all those other issues taken care of. So we do have VPN connection available for the Ames and the Nevada users. And just kind of a refresher. Just because you work in Nevada doesn't mean you connect to Nevada. It's where you connect from. Our Ames location has a little bit smaller pipe. So we encourage whoever can to connect via the Nevada VPN. That has a one gig whereas Ames has a 400 gig.
Is that, is that a choice of the user? Or?
No, it's, it's how we route. Otherwise you're going to experience slowness or your connection's going to drop. So we, we try to even it up and we allow a few more in the Nevada side, but in an emergency, like the sheriff over the weekend needed to get in and he obviously didn't read my email. So, so we had to connect him to the Ames site, but then he was fine.
Okay.
So we try to keep those as to where you're connecting from. We've also been busy with budget and CIP review. You will see that our budget is a little higher this year. And this too relates to some of the things that happened two years ago when we had the COVID scare. We bought a lot of extra computers so that people could have laptops to work from home. And we also utilize some of the COVID funds, the CARES funds and things for replacing hardware. So, and to pay for the Zoom licensing and some other things. So those are going to come on our budget this year. So just FYI. Um, we've also been working very carefully with the multi-agency group. They're, most of their hardware is up for, as far as the computers, the servers and the storage is up for renewal. And it's been a little difficult trying to get those numbers to match the, some of the software licensing is at the end of maintenance. So that's taken a lot of time. I'm hoping to have that resolved in January so that we can make sure that we get that stuff ordered before it's out of maintenance. One thing that happens when, when you push your hardware maintenance out over five years, then the manufacturer doubles and triples it because they want you to keep buying new hardware. And really, we found this out the hard way eight years ago. It's more cost effective to purchase new hardware than it is to pay that exorbitant maintenance that they charge. So we're, hopefully we'll get through that. We've got till the end of January before the vendor starts socking us with those elevated maintenance fees. Public auction, this is something that the employees are always really interested in. And right now what Dean is working through, he's doing the computer installs and he's cleaning out our cold storage. It was full to capacity. You had to like shimmy inside ways to get in there to see stuff. But he's been getting rid of a lot of the older laptops and computers that really we don't recommend selling to our employees because we, they're just trouble. They're like 10, 15 years old. So he is getting some, some good luck on the public auction, but what they do is just strip them out and sell the cases and things like that. Once we get to where the computers are maybe six, seven years old, we'll send an email out to the employees and encourage them to bid on them. And I know in the past several employees have purchased things on public auction. And, and this is after, I should note, after we've already donated. We donate to Goodwill. There are several other smaller nonprofits that we donate to. We've got a whole list. Used to be they would take computers. Now they're more interested in laptops. So. So anyway, some of the projects we have coming up, the county desk phone replacement, we placed an order for those that should be in, they think by the middle of January. Some of the stuff we're running into supply chain issues with the phones there thinking that we should have them in by middle of January. Then we'll get them set up and start installing in February. We also are looking at some more network switch replacements this coming year. We have seven that are end of life and need to be replaced. Three of those are horribly expensive. I used to be able to get a switch for 7,000 and now it's 32,000. So.
Yeah. What?
Yeah. And with a 200 day lead time. So these seven floor switches we're going to replace are maybe $7,000, $8,000. But the ones on the perimeter that I have in the CIP are $32,000 apiece.
Oh, I guess I thought those, that was total.
No. Good luck. Unfortunately, yeah. And, and I was, had the same reaction, but and the way that works, so when you do go out and get quotes, they have what they call preferred vendors. So the, if I contact three different vendors that we're working with and say, hey, I'd like some quotes on these switches. The first one that gets to Cisco is the one that gets the preferred price. And it doesn't seem fair really, but it's kind of a monopoly and that's what they do. And we're also going to implement multi-factor authentication. I've been warning people because this is going to be huge. It's going to be something that won't be fun. But if you've logged into any of your banking accounts or financial accounts, you know, you already know this is what you have to do. So it's something you know, something you have. We still haven't decided what that second thing would be. A lot of people don't want to use their cell phones, so a cell phone code might not work. People have expressed they don't want to carry dongles. So um, some of the solutions offer like a desk phone. You'll get an automated message telling you what the code is. So we're looking at maybe that. I think that would be.
That's not good if you're working from home.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that's a consideration too.
That won't work.
Yeah. That won't work.
For a lot of us.
Unless you forward your phone to your cell phone.
That, and then if you haven't done that, then you're.
And you don't always know when you're going to be working from home. So.
Exactly. So can you have options? I mean, if somebody wants to use their cell phone, can they do that? Or otherwise it defaults to desk phone?
It depends on what, we're looking at Duo right now. I'm not sure if they allow that option. Right now we're just getting pricing. But I would say it would have to be some kind of a complex solution for us, not just a one size fits all.
I mean, you, you get, you're given the, the, like for the phone number, you're given the choice of what phone number you want to use. So if you're someone who tends to work remotely and you want to use your phone, you can put that number in.
That's not.
Option.
If you're not opposed to using your personal cell phone.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I thought you were saying people would all have to use their desk phones.
No, that would be an alternative for people who don't want to give out their personal cell phone number.
That would be better.
Yeah.
To have those alternatives.
So anyway, it is what it is. And you know, I listened to when our insurance agency gave their report. They did mention we could get maybe some kind of a, a discount if we implemented multi-factor authentication. So.
Right.
It's something that everybody is starting to require and I just want to be head of the game. I don't want them to say you have to have this in by June 30th or else. So. Um, some of our daily work that we've been doing, I did send some graphs out. This is always interesting to see how we spend our day to day. Most of it is in software support. Somebody has a question with Tyler, somebody can't get into civil service, things like that. Most of it is software hardware takes up the majority. The phones aren't, they aren't as problematic as they used to be, but account management, that's just add, delete, change, things like that. And the network hasn't been too problematic lately. I should knock on wood. Why is this a plastic table? Is this a wood table? We need to have something that we can knock on. Um, and, and it's always fun. I also included just kind of a breakdown of website visits. And this changes too by what's going on around us. And if you look at about, so the first one is just visits to the homepage and that's always the biggest. People go there and maybe they don't go someplace else or they find what they want to do from the homepage. But then out of the top 10, it looks like five involve elections. And property is always up there in the top 10. There's two of them for beacon and then the assessor. Animal control is always up there because people want to see what cute animals look like. We also have the jail. Everybody, well, a lot of people like to go and see who's in jail. So, so those are the top.
So jail is on there twice. Is that like, one is the front page and then one is the?
Right. They drill down then, like if they're going to an actual piece of that page. And that's what I have for your board. Do you have any questions?
I do have one. The Maps G software. I was talking to somebody, I think Nick Rizzino a while back and was on ambulance call transfers. Like from Story County to Ames vice versa, and the amount of time that they take to transfer a call. Do you know anything, there was hope that the new software would reduce that time. Do you know anything about that?
That would be part, right now we're just in the, what do we want the new software to do stage? And there's a committee and we're forming bullet points. That is one of them. We haven't, there was a software program we were pretty well interested in a couple of years ago. And since then that's had bad reviews. So we're just getting ready to prepare RFP, but that will be one of the bullet points and how it's measured, I'm not sure right now.
But I might, I might not have understood something in your report on Maps G.
I'm just dealing basically with the software that runs the hardware, like VMware and things like that. You're talking.
Oh, the maintenance contract for the storage device will end next year. So we have longer on the software. Okay, that answers my question.
The software we have, you know, it's, there's been no end date. They assured us. They would give us a five-year lead time for the end date on that. It's a very old program. It uses a lot of old Windows configurations that you don't see nowadays. So it is at a critical stage where we need to replace it. I think it's 12 years old now and this is not the original vendor. He took it on when we went with this current vendor, but it's not their program. So they want to get us off of it. So we still haven't gotten the five-year lead time. Hey, we're going to cut you off, but we'd like to not be in that situation.
Be nice, but we can get new software sooner than that.
Oh, yes.
We're not.
And the Maps G budget puts aside so much every, every year so that we have kind of a, a base to pull from. I don't, the last one was 250,000. So I don't think we're going to get by that cheaply this time around.
250,000.
Was the cost of the last software 12 years ago. Wow. And that was.
20,000 a year.
That was the cheapest. And then we pay maintenance on that every year. I believe it's 30,000. So.
Well, it's important software.
Yeah.
It is. I mean, when you think of all the users and that's really the, you know.
And we want to make sure this time around that the right people are heard as to what their needs are. The current software did not address the jails needs. So they, the sheriff had two of his staff create a little software program that, that connects to the, the software, but it, there was an issue with the timing on prisoner release and things like that, that the software didn't address. So we had.
Cause there was a jail component in the current software, but we're not using it.
Didn't, yeah. So we've just enhanced that. We want to make sure that next program, we don't have to do that. You always run into trouble when that happens. When they do an update, then if your update doesn't match their update, then things don't work. So we just want to make sure that IT is heard this time around.
Okay. And I'm glad that you have the, the transferring of the ambulance calls because it was two piece apps. That's essential that we have that done.
Yes.
More speed.
And that's part of the bullets that we want to make sure that are addressed with the new software.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, board?
Do, do we know how far out we are from that multi-factor authentication?
We plan on looking at that after the holidays. So I'm thinking March. After we get the phones installed, now that we are fully staffed, should be able to move along a little quicker.
It'd be nice if there was like a training, something like in each department and office, that everyone kind of walks through the, the importance, why we're doing it. Sure. And what happens if we don't do this so that maybe, maybe then there'd be a little less pushback or grumbling. It's going to be hard for everybody. Everybody wants in and out quickly, but it's just not safe anymore to do it that way.
And maybe if there was something to come out of your office that talked about why we need to do it and what some of the options are, maybe even ask people, if you've got some options that you say it could be done, Bruce, via your cell phone or the desk phone, you know, to let people know that there, there will be some options and ask for feedback.
Sure, I can do that. I haven't asked for feedback, but I have sent out several emails, just kind of softening the ground and warning people that is coming. But they're probably like, oh, you know.
Well, I mean, you sent out several emails about the VPN.
Right, yeah.
Too. So I was just thinking maybe something more formal where everybody's, you know, it's like in person or video or, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say too, if you're gathering input from folks early on, to know that if they're going to choose that authentication, either their desk phone or their personal phone, is it just, you can only choose one? You know, be thinking about, you know, what, what you might want because you're only going to be able to choose one. Either the desk, your desk phone or your cell phone or, or something for that.
The importance of, of this, this decision.
Someone who's got to work from home.
Sure.
You know.
And I, I do think it's important to, to limit the options. Otherwise people are going to be deer in the headlights and like, I don't know what this means. Maybe offer one or two, but not a whole list.
Agree.
Agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Barb. We have no other reports, any upcoming agenda items? I don't. Okay. Now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one raise their hand or come forward, we'll close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. So supervisor Hens, who want to go first?
Sure. I just have a meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow I look, it looks like I'm going to be attending the combined Empower Rule Iowa Development Council meeting. I see we also have the holiday dinner tomorrow here, so I might buzz over here since that is here in Ames. Or excuse me, Nevada. Thursday I will be reaching out to departments for information to do the recording or beyond KHI next week. I'm also going to be reading a book for at Meeker's Readathon tomorrow afternoon. Thursday I've got workforce development meeting and a Herta meeting going on as well.
Um, about some of the things that happened last week, on the seventh, I wanted to let everybody know that the headwaters of the South Skunk Watershed Management Association received the final watershed assessment report for the headwaters. And we're starting to work on some action steps to implement that. It's going to be a long, slow process, but we have a, a good report and we're looking forward to that. On another watershed issue, I met Thursday via Zoom with a small group of people who are working on trying to get funding for watershed coordinators. And we have a meeting coming up this week with ISAC because I did present a policy statement on funding for watershed coordinators that was, was included in the ISAC package for next year. So Lucas Benken is going to meet with us and we're going to talk about where that might, where that might go. So this week I will also be attending the Empower Rule Iowa Development Council meeting. And we have District One Supervisors meeting. And then Wednesday evening, emergency management meets and looks over our budget proposal for next year. I'm trying to get some meetings, still sit with some of our broadband providers to talk. Um, trying to get some meetings still set um, with some of our broadband providers to talk about the SEC map. And the challenge period that's coming up and what we can do about that. It's a very confusing process. Hopefully we'll have some time to do that yet this week. And after that, I'm gonna be gone for the next two weeks, so we won't miss the next two board meetings.
Hey, okay. Um, last week I had um, the first meeting for the Naco um. County officials advancing racial equity and justice system meeting. Um, that's a two-year. Uh. Networking partnership. Um, so it it was a very, it was a great meeting. There are a lot of really. Um, interesting people from all over the country on this um. In this network, so I'm I'm excited to see what we're. What good work we're gonna bring forward. So I had that kickoff meeting last week and then also. The initial meeting of the ISAC um, Technical Service Bureau meeting. Um, we're gonna be meeting monthly to talk about cybersecurity and um, just um, network safety for. Uh. Counties. Um. So that was the last week. This week, all the same meetings. Um, did you catch the District One Supervisors meeting on Wednesday night? Um. So today I have um, a Naco's Healthy Counties Advisory Board meeting and then a Boost meeting this evening. Um, and then I will be attending the Ames Chambers Annual Event tomorrow afternoon. Um, we have um, the wellness checks going on. At the Human Services Building in Ames, so if anyone signed up for the wellness check. Um, there tomorrow morning in Ames. Um. And. Uh, Thursday morning, I'm reading at Meeker for the Meeker Read-A-Thon. And then I have a hunger collaboration meeting Thursday afternoon. Friday, I have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. Um, and we have a green team meeting also Friday morning. It's just, I can't believe how busy this month is. Uh, Monday, I'm doing a site visit with Boost. We're going to be um. Doing a site visit to YSS and then I have uh, Naco Arts and Culture Commission. And Story County College Access Network. Um, and and then I'm done for the day. So. You had a busy week. I I expected December to be a little less busy. It it is not. Um, with that, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
I.
Merkin.
I.
Basil, I, we're adjourned. Thank you.